And it is here, yeah, okay. Well, to your order, the Township of Ocean Planning Board, regular meeting, July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Amy, can you do the roll call?
It's actually gonna be Nicole.
Okay, Nicole, can you do the roll call, please? I'm sorry.
It's okay. Okay, Mr. Dufelia.
Here.
Mr. Duffy. Hey. Dr. Fisher.
Here.
Ms. Close.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mr. Beal.
Here.
Mr. Adis.
Here.
Mr. Badnovich.
Here.
Mr. Carmonica.
Here.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Here.
And Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion that before we do anything further, we swear in the new members? So that everyone actually is eligible?
Sure, go right ahead.
Wait, can we do the pledge first?
Yeah, I was gonna do the pledge.
That's fine.
Ed, you'd like to pledge allegiance first. Okay, let's do it. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
Where it stands, one nation, under God.
This is visible, liberty, justice.
Okay, I believe, does everyone who is saying an oath tonight have their oaths in front of them and know who they are? Okay, so, so you just raise your right hands. And repeat after me, I state your name.
I did.
I did, David Badnovich.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Jersey. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and partially and justly.
Faithfully and partially and justly.
Perform all the duties of.
Perform all the duties of.
A state your position.
As one member of the Township of Ocean Planning Board.
According to the best of my abilities, to help me God. Congratulations to everyone else.
The notice of requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied, and the copy of the notice has been sent to the Esri Park Press and the Coaster filed in a motion in the office of the Township Clerk. Board policy, no new cases. We started after ten thirty P M. And no new testimony taken after eleven P M. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's Community Cable Channel, Channel twenty-two, and on Verizon, FiOS, and Channel seventy-seven on cable vision.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend also that before you proceed with resolution memorialization, that we do the reorganization first. So that we have a chairman, uh, I mean presumptive that you're gonna be the chairman, we don't know.
That is correct. Never know.
I'll make it, I'll make a nominee, I'll make a nomination for Joe as the, uh, Chairman of the Planning Board.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Second.
All right, and we should have a roll call on that, please.
Okay, um, Mr. Dufelia.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy. Oh, he's not here, I'm sorry. Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. Okay, so, uh, Mark, should I, should we just continue that plan?
I would, Mr. Chair, yes, because you want all your officers in place before we start doing anything else, because I'm not even, I might not be the attorney, I don't know what's gonna happen.
All right, I elect, um, Vice Chairman as Jeff Weinstein. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
We'll do a roll call.
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
He's not here.
Oh, I keep doing that.
Okay, Nicole.
Sorry. Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna approve the meeting dates for the coming year. With the exception of September, we're gonna move that to September nineteenth, correct?
Correct.
And November, we're gonna move that to November twenty-eighth.
Correct.
Can we, uh, can I have a second on that?
Second.
Can you?
That could be an all in favor.
I.
All in favor?
I.
All right, that's done. Um, we're gonna appoint, um, Mark Lexstein as our Board Attorney. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're gonna appoint the, uh, Planning Board Planner, Jim Higgins. Can I have a second, please?
As we, as a point of order, we, we appoint Higgins and Associates.
So. As an associate, excuse me.
In case that, um, Jim can't make it, Allison, his daughter, is part of Higgins and Associates.
Okay. Duly noted. Can I have a second for that?
A second.
Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. We're gonna appoint Bennett Matlock and Associates.
Well, that's, it's CME Engineering.
Oh, we're, we're just appointing CME Engineering, not Bennett Matlock.
Correct. He happens to work for them.
Sorry, Bennett.
I, I appreciate it. He gave me, gave me a major upgrade.
Okay, so we're doing CME Engineering as our Board Engineering. Can I have a second, please?
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. Are we appointing Amy?
Are we? Yes, we are.
Okay, so we are appointing, uh, we'd like to appoint Amy for, what's Amy's last name?
Stuart.
Stuart.
Stuart, I'm sorry. Amy Stewart is our Board Secretary. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. Mark, are you doing the swearing in of the professionals? Or you can't do it?
Yeah, I mean, do I swear myself in?
I don't have anything for you to read.
Um, I, I guess it would be the same, uh, the professionals don't have to be sworn in, but, but, um, I can, I can do it, I, I can just read the same thing over again if you'd like. If that, and, uh, and Jim wanna be sworn.
We don't need this, because it gets sworn every time.
Okay.
Have, so.
Yeah, they're licensed professionals, they don't, they don't need to be sworn, uh, in particular, I mean, like, listen, do you two swear that you will act to the best of your ability under God and perform your duties appropriately?
I will.
There you go.
I'm glad you did that, otherwise we'd have to get another, uh, meeting agenda.
Uh, right. In part, ladies and gentlemen, that's my fault, so.
Okay, um, we're gonna go to resolution memorializations. Uh, Glignum Development LLC, Block sixty-five, Lot seven, seven twenty-one, Curly's Avenue, Ocean, Minor Subdivision Approval. Can I get a second to memorialize this?
I'll second that.
Hey, Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. All right, next, uh, resolution memorialization would be W G Apartments, D E LLC, Block two-one-six, Lots twenty-one and twenty-two, one-one, one-five, one-five, Allen Avenue, Ocean Minor Subsite Plan Approval, Bulk Variance Approval. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Nicole? Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. All right, case is carried to August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, to be held in person at the Town Hall, three-nine-nine Monmouth Road, Seaview Acquisitions LLC, Block one-four-one, Lots one and two, twenty-three oh one, Route sixty-six, Ocean. Ness Shemento, Block one-seven dash dot zero-one, Lot eight, one-zero, one-zero-seven, Adams Avenue, Ocean, and Deal Land, Deal thirty-five, Land LLC, Block thirty-three, Lot one-nine dot zero-two, one-six zero-three, Highway thirty-five, Ocean. All right. Uh, we do this action needed for, okay, I'll just read it, Resolution of the Township of Ocean in the County of Monmouth, authorizing, directing the Township Planning Board to conduct preliminary investigation to determine whether certain property located at Block one-point-zero-two, Lot three-three dot zero-one, Ocean Glades constitutes an area in need of redevelopment. So we're just conducting a vote.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you, what you're doing is you're just voting to commence, commence this work is all you're doing.
Okay, so I've, um, I make a motion to, uh, approve this, so.
To, to, to start the process.
To start the process.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
That can be, that can be a voice vote.
Any, all in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Any nays? Okay. All right, minutes for approval, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Miss, oh, Ms. Close, you're not eligible. Uh, Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Sorry, unmute, yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto?
Yes.
And I, I just wanna say for the January minutes, the only people who are eligible to vote on those are Dr. Fisher, Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Badnovich, Mr. Carmonica, and Chairman de Benedetto.
All right, minutes for approval for January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. Minutes for approval, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I get a second to?
Second.
Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Minutes for approval. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. Minutes for approval, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. Ron?
Yes.
Can we always have to do all these minute approvals in groups? Can we do them like one, one every month?
It depends on the workload, everybody's, is catching up, so this is why you're up to April now.
All right, very good. All right, new case, Crosnie, Berg, Philansky, and Turtel. Block two-one-six, Lot one-one-three-three-three, Fairmont Avenue, Ocean Zone C three. It's an application to place a generator on site on the side yard setback where twelve feet is required and two feet is proposed. Applicant is, uh, the, excuse me, attorney for the applicant is Lisa Crinkle.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, before, before the attorney starts speaking, I just wanna mark in exhibits and evidence.
All right ahead.
Yeah, Exhibit A one will be the boundary and topographic survey from inside engineering dated August fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Exhibit A two will be the minor site plan of inside engineering, revised March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Exhibit A three will be the Freehold Soil Conservation District Report dated April seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Those are the three exhibits from the applicant that I have. Then I have the following exhibits, uh, that are board exhibits. Exhibit B one, as in Board one, will be the Board Engineers Report dated July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Exhibit B two will be the Board Planners Report dated July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And Exhibit B three will be the Ocean Township Fire Marshals Report. Those are all the exhibits, Mr. Chair.
Great.
Thank you. Lisa Crinkle appearing on behalf of the applicant of Crosnie, Berg, Philansky, and Turtel. With me today, I have Kathy Chiarella, who is the Practice Manager for the business, which, as you know, is an eye surgery center, and we also have Chris Bednarzki, an engineer from Inside Engineering.
Okay, uh, what I would like to do, uh, with your, if that's okay, is I'd like to hear our, our boards, uh, our professional boards, uh, guys report and see what they have to say about this application. Is that all right with you?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
Let me just worry Mr. Higgins and then Mr. Matlock. Do they swear a testimony they're about to give is evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self, and God?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I'm just gonna summarize, this is a very simple application. What they're doing is they're replacing existing shed with a generator. They're gonna remove the shed. The generator, in terms of visibility, is much less visible than the shed, it won't be visible from surrounding properties. Considering it's located so close to Route thirty-five, I think that the road noise from Route thirty-five will probably be louder than the generator. And it's really the only place on the site that seems to be suitable to locate the generator, so I really don't have any problem at all with it, I think that it's, I think it's a good, good thing, I think it's needed for all businesses, really, so that they don't lose power during power outages. So, I really, I think it's a good thing, I think there's positive reasons for it, and I don't see any substantial negative impact.
Okay. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, the only things that I noted were, uh, the potential need for screening, uh, of the generator. Jim had already kinda touched on that, and, uh, any potential noise impacts, but, uh, I'm, I'm sure the, uh, the applicant will provide similar testimony to what, uh, Mr. Higgins just said.
Okay. Ms. Crinkle?
Yes, thank you. Could you swear in our engineer, Mr. Bednarzki, please?
Let me suggest something, uh, Crinkle, if, uh, and, Mr. Chairman, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, i- is there a need for additional testimony, uh, unless you're going to contradict what, uh, Mr. Higgins?
No, I don't think that we need additional testimony, I just, I, I don't know what they have to.
No, no, I understand.
Wanted to hear what he had to say, uh, you know, I, I can't imagine he has much to say, so.
Yeah, and, and I wasn't saying that to, to, uh, to, to, to prevent, to prevent Ms. Crinkle from going forward, I'm just trying to give her a hint that unless she has something further to add, it might not be necessary.
Don't worry, hint taken. I just thought that if you wanted us to address the screening issue, we would. I think there probably isn't a need for screening due to the location. Mr. Bednarzki could address that in probably two minutes if you wanted.
That would be wonderful, please do.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you need to swear him in?
Yeah, both where I'm in. Mr. Bednarzki, do you swear a testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self, and God?
I do.
All right, and you are a licensed engineer, State of New Jersey?
I am.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bednarzki, could you please just address the screening issue and only that, since the board, uh, seems to have a, a handle on this application?
Absolutely, so, uh, essentially, there's no need for additional screening. The generator in, is relocated in the rear of the property. Um, there's a substantial grade change from the Wells Fargo Bank parking lot to this property of about five feet. So by elevation, the generator is screened in itself, and there's also an existing, uh, landscape buffer on the Wells Fargo property that screens that from any kind of view, uh, from, from, uh, Fairmont or even Route thirty-five. The, the final bit of screening is there's an existing chain link fence in the area as well, so you're, you're screened in three different ways. Uh, do we have any questions? From our board?
Uh, I have a question, and I do not know if this is the, the, uh, the expert to ask of it, but I want to follow up on Mr. Matlock's que- uh, question regarding noise.
Sure, so, so regarding noise, uh, you know, the, the generator is located, uh, sixty-one feet away from the residential, uh, property buffer, the apartments to the north. It is, and it is a commercial, uh, property surrounded by other commercial properties, and the generator will not, uh, cause any issue with noise. In, in fact, the generator won't be on except in the case of a, you know, a power failure, or it will be cycled on, uh, every month for about, you know, thirty minutes just to keep it running, you know, and make sure everything's in working order, and that would be during normal business hours. So, uh, essentially, there is no, uh, real impact on any noise from the generator. Okay. Does that answer your, uh, question, Ed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for any of the professionals? Okay. Uh, anyone from the public have any questions for anyone? On this application? All right, we'll close the public hearing. I make a motion to approve this application. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dufelia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman de Benedetto.
Yes. All right, next case, uh, one, one thing, uh, Mr. Mark, um, am I supposed to have a vote to close the hearing first?
No, you don't need to.
All right, thank you. Next new case, Peter Wolf, Block one-one-three, Lot four-six-eight, Deal Lake, Point Road, Ocean, Zone R dash six. This is an application, subdivide a ten thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-four square foot lot and give five thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-seven square foot to Lot three and five thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-seven square foot to Lot five. Ms. Crinkle?
Yes.
You're back again.
Let me just read in the, uh, marked exhibits. Exhibit A one, which is the only exhibit we have from the applicant, is a survey of the property by Lakeland Surveying dated March, May second, two thousand and twenty-two. We then have the following board exhibits, Board Engineers Report, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Board Planners Report, uh, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, will be Exhibit B two. Exhibit B three will be the Crime Prevention Officers Report dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. And Exhibit B four, Fire Marshal's Review Letter, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. And, Mr. Chairman, I would only note, those are the exhibits. I just wanna make sure Ms. Crinkle has a copy of the Crime Prevention Officers Report, because it was, there were several suggestions made in that letter, so I wanted to make sure you had it, had enough to you to see that.
I do, we did get to see that, thank you.
All right, thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so again, I'd like to, uh, start with our board professionals, if you're okay with that?
Yes, thank you.
All right, go for it, Mr. Higgins.
Okay, um, yeah, this, uh, what you have is three lots, you have two residential lots that on each side of a lot that is, doesn't have a residence on it, it does have a garage on it. So, you have a number of existing non-conformities that are being eliminated by the, by the subdivision. A first, Lot three, which is the westernmost lot, has a lot width variant, it non-conformity as it currently exists. It has a lot area non-conformity, a front yard setback non-conformity, and an impervious, and it appears most probably an impervious lot coverage non-conformity. This subdivision will, uh, reduce the lot width requirement, which I'll get it, uh, lot width variance, which I'll get into in a little bit. It will eliminate the lot area variance, it will elim- eliminate the impervious lot coverage variance if there is a non-conforming condition with regard to that. It won't change the front yard setback, but I, I will also get into issues with the front yard setbacks, such as shown on the plans. Lot four, which is the center, center lot that doesn't have a residence, is non-conforming because it has an accessory structure with no principal structure. So again, this application will eliminate that condition by adding the poor southern, the eastern portion of that lot to new lot, to Lot five, and therefore, that will be an accessory structure on a lot with a principal structure, eliminating that variance. Lot five is also non-conforming with regard to lot width and with regard to front yard setback, and the lot width non-conformity will be eliminated again. The, I, overall, I think it's a very good application, I think the concept is very good. You have two variances that the board needs to grant. One of those is the minimum lot width for the western lot, and again, it's, it's difficult, because most applications that we get assign lot numbers to the new lots that are being created, and it's easy for me to relate those lot numbers to the new lots. In this case, there are no new lot numbers, uh, that are designated, so it's the westernmost lot, which is Lot three plus the additional lot area. That width will still be non-conforming, the ordinance requires a hundred feet, and as I scale it off, it's approximately eighty-eight feet lot width. And I think that the plan has to be revised to show exactly what the lot width is, So that Mark can write a resolution granting a variance, if you so approve it, for that lot width. With regard to front yard setback, the ordinance requires a front yard setback of 30 feet. Both of the residences are setback less than 30 feet. But again, the plans only show the setback to the front facade of the residences. And both residences have porches and steps in front of them, and the setback has to be measured to those porches and steps. So the plans have to be revised to show what the actual front yard setback of the structures are before Mark can do a resolution. Because otherwise, he's not going to have a figure to put in this resolution. Again, I think overall, it's, it's a much improved situation. They're, they're eliminating a bunch of variances. And I don't see any substantial negative impact. If anything, there are only benefits.
Mr. Matlak, you have any, can you read your report or summarize your report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just read it real quick. I just have one, one thing that I want to point out. The applicant should indicate the FEMA floodplain boundary on the survey for lots 3, 4, and 5. The plan is in an assumed datum and therefore does not poorly with the approximate FEMA flood elevation of 10 feet. Since there are no site improvements proposed, this is not a major concern. However, any future proposed improvements are required to comply with the Township Ordinance, Chapter 26, flood damage prevention. Revised survey should be submitted showing the FEMA floodplain boundary.
Does anybody from the board have any questions for our professionals? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have, I'd ask Ms. Crinkle to lead off with, is she willing to provide us with those setback calculations Mr. Higgins was talking about? I can shoot her an email so she can shoot it, shoot those dimensions back to me as soon as she gets them. If the board is so inclined to proceed without having those numbers. And also, I'm also going to be looking for confirmation that they will comply with the, with the comments that Bennett just made and also with the crime prevention report recommendations.
Okay, yes, we would certainly, if you need the revisions, or at least we could just provide you with the lot, proposed lot, lot numbers, new lot numbers, the proposed lot depth and the front yard setbacks, including the porch and the steps. I think those are the numbers that you'd need and we could certainly get that to you. As far as the crime prevention recommendation of fencing, it was, I thought that was a bit unusual in that there's really not a lot of fencing in that whole, that whole block. Nothing's fenced in except for Mr. Wolf's pool, which is required. So I didn't know what kind of fencing they were talking about. It's just an empty lot that's not really very big, that's going to be divided. Whether they, which is if they needed to put a fence, they would need a variance if they wanted to, but nothing's fenced in in that whole area. Because I didn't really know what, what he was talking, thinking of. Maybe Mr. Wolf can address the fencing. If they're, they wanted fencing, he could put it up.
I mean, I know. Let me swear you in. Do you swear your testimony about the give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self to God?
Sure, yes.
And, and I should, I should just be clear. If you're looking for a waiver, it wouldn't even be a waiver. I mean, these certainly aren't ordinance conditions. The recommendations from the crime prevention officer. You can certainly ask the board to consider not requiring one of those conditions. So I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know how the board feels on those individual points.
But Mr. Wolf, go ahead.
I, I mean, aside from the required fence around the pool, I, I agree with Lisa that I don't know if putting a fence in the yard or in what will be the separate yards would make, would make sense. So, you know, I'll leave that to your recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you guys think, if you're requiring a fence, I'm sure they would clearly consider that, but this seems like an unusual consideration when there's no fencing. And there never was a fence when the house was there. There's no fence anywhere really, except for Mr. Wolf's pool.
Can we put up the, the drawing of the two lots? And have a discussion? I, I would like Mr. Higgins to point out some of the things that were not correct on, on those plans and and then we can also discuss where this fence is being recommended. So everyone can see. So I don't know who would do that. Would that be?
Nicole, can you share the screen? For Lisa Crinkle, I believe. Lisa, you have the plans in front of you?
Well, let me get them. I have the other plan. Let's see. My Wi-Fi is not very good here.
I have the plan up. If you want, I can share it.
Why don't you do that, Mr. Matlak?
Thank you.
Nicole, if you can help me.
You're the co, you're already the co-host.
All right, there we go. That work?
There you go. We got.
There we go. All right, Mr. Higgins, can you first tell us what you're referring to?
Surely, let's talk about the front yard setbacks first. Look on Lot 3, which is the westernmost lot, the lot to the left. You'll see there's a dimension measured to the front of the house of 23.3 feet. And, or 20, yeah, 23.3 feet. And that should be measured to the front of the porch, which will be considerably less than 23.3 feet. And we just need that figure. Similarly, if you look at Lot 5, the house again has an overhang and steps in the front. The dimension is measured to the front facade of the house at 24.2 feet. And the actual dimension for the setback to the steps will probably be about five feet less than that, maybe six feet less than that. But we just need those figures. And then the other figure we would need, because Lot, the new Lot 3 that has the addition of Lot 4 is the width, lot width, which is measured, if you measure 30 feet back from the front lot line and then on either side, and then draw a straight line between those two points, that's the lot width. And it measures to be about 88 feet. But again, the, it's, the difference is going to be less than a foot. It'll be, might be 88.2 feet or 87.8 feet. But in order to get it accurate, we should have that, those figures so that Mark can plug those into the resolution. And then the only other issue is that the new lot should have lot numbers assigned to them. And I suggested that it be either subject to Ben's approval or the tax assessor's approval, whichever is more appropriate.
So typically, new lot numbers do come from the tax assessor.
Yeah.
And, and so that's, I mean, that's something that will have to be done most likely post-approval. I use, I always condition subdivisions when new, I, I always condition that upon tax, getting a new number from a tax assessor.
That's fine.
Yeah. So.
So those are my only concerns.
Ms. Crinkle, you have, you, you, you would agree to doing all that, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Next, next thing is the this proposed fencing. Where are they proposing a fence or where are they recommending a proposal of the fence?
You know, I wasn't very clear on that. I didn't know if they wanted a fence you know, in between the two lots.
I'm going to. So, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't say. I mean, Lisa, let me just ask you, is that the only item in his letter which, which you, which you're concerned about?
Yeah, that was the only thing I just thought was unusual, just because there's, there isn't any fencing between these properties at all. Anyway, nor was there, and it's the pool that's fenced in for obvious reasons.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, it says, since that's the only item that she's concerned about, it says the property owner should install a fence around the property to prevent any issues with trespassing. That's the recommendation from the crime prevention officer. And I am, I, I don't know if he just means establishing new, I can't point to it, but whether he just means, yeah, you know, just, yeah, just around the new, the new borders. I, I don't know that it's necessary, but again, that's the recommendation of the crime prevention officer.
Okay. All right, very good. Anyone have any questions? Anybody from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment. I, I conducted my site visit to the neighborhood and I'm actually familiar with it because I jog through it fairly regularly. I, I don't think that a fence, unless the owners wish to install it of their own, I, I don't think it would be in keeping with the rest of the character of the neighborhood for us to, to require it. But it's just my opinion on the matter.
I, I have a question. And I don't know who would answer this. So it, it looks like the, the subdivision will go in the middle of this vacant lot that has a masonry garage. So there's going to be now two garages on the eastern lot. Is that, those two garages going to be maintained?
I can answer that. I probably should have put that within my report. But first of all, you can have more than one accessory structure as long as the second one is, is if it's larger than 150 square feet, as long as it meets the side, front, and rear yard setbacks, which that second structure does. So no matter what they were to use it for, it would be legally existing. But the plan is to use it as a storage shed. That was, that was in the application.
Okay.
It'll be a storage shed. And I think that's what they're using it as now, as a matter of fact. It looked like.
Yes, it won't be storing vehicles. It's used for, as a storage shed only in that, and they would agree to that going into the resolution.
But it is fully conforming in terms of its location.
Anybody else have any questions for any of the professionals?
I'm sorry. So let me understand. So is this, is Lot 4 co-owned by the residents of Lot 3 and Lot 5?
Yes.
And now they're subdividing it?
Yes, subdividing. So they'll each take ownership of half of it and merge it with their lots.
But there's no fence around any of it at this time?
No, no.
Right, which is why I also question why a fence would be needed if they never had one before and they're co-owning that lot.
The, the other thing, when I look at that report, I'm thinking if you have to put a fence around these lots to prevent trespassing, then you should do it on every lot in the township.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm questioning, yeah.
Yeah.
I've got a question. So I think you answered it. So there's two separate owners for these two different houses here, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What was this land, who had the majority of this land? There was, what was the rationale to divide this center there?
I'm assume, I, I think Ms. Crinkle could probably answer it better than I can, but the way I look at it, there was a vacant, basically a vacant parcel. There was probably a house on this parcel that was demolished. So this became available. They purchased it together with the idea of each of them expanding their own properties. Down the middle.
So this wasn't a piece of land that the township owned that they were sold?
No.
Well, Dr. Fisher, this was a, there was a very dilapidated, falling apart house. It was an absolutely dangerous condition. When the resident passed away, the neighbors purchased the lot in between them. And they got a permit and everything to demolish the house. It really had to go. It was very dangerous. The roof was caving in. It was terrible. And they demolished it, cut the utilities, everything, all with permits and made it into a vacant lot with the intention that they figured, well, let's make our lots now more conforming by dividing the property between us. And that's, that's how it all sort of came to be over the last year or two.
So basically, both homeowners are just getting a little bit more land, more conform.
Exactly.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, so Ms. Crinkle, you, you, you will agree to redo the measurements? We, you will comply with all the letters except for the fence? I don't, what is this FEMA plan that you were talking about, Mr. Matlak?
So the, the Deal Lake is, is right behind the.
Correct.
And it has a floodplain associated with it. And the boundary of that should be shown on the plan. Not, none of the, there, there are no improvements proposed. So it's, it's not going to affect the subdivision in any way. But I'd like to see the information shown on the survey for, you know, future record keeping and the if, if there is any, ever any building expansion or improvements to the properties, we need to know where that, that FEMA line is.
Okay. Ms. Crinkle, you have any, any problem, any objections to that?
If that's what the board requires, then we will submit that. I think we can probably move forward and just submit that as, as a condition, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So Mark, you want to spell it all out for us?
Sure. They're going to comply with all the, all the, all the recommendations of the professionals. They're going to provide those extra dimensions that we need prior to the, prior to the next meeting so that I can put it within the resolution. And the only condition that they're doing, they're not going to comply with and the board is not requiring of them is that recommendation for the fence by the crime prevention officer.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the public? On this application? Okay, I close the public hearing. I make a motion to approve with the conditions set by Mark Glaxton. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dofelia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Bodnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica?
Yes.
And Chairman Di Benedetto?
Yes. All right. Congratulations. Enjoy your new property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're coming back on, what is that, August? August 22nd?
Yeah.
The only point of business I'd like to say is that with Peter Siano as the mayor's designee after he resigned, Mayor Sisliano will be taking that spot on the board, probably for the next meeting.
Okay.
So. Just want everyone to be aware.
So we're, we're going to be at
Town Hall.
In person, Town Hall.
Whoa.
Call, call, it's seven upstairs?
Yes.
Okay.
For everyone's information, after all this Zoom, it's at 399 Monmouth Road. It's been a while since we've all been together.
Ocean Township?
Yes. Well, actually, Ocean Township, Monmouth County. I don't, you know, Mr. Beal is down here laughing over here, but I don't think he's ever been to an in-person meeting.
He has not.
Can I ask why we're doing it in person?
Excuse me?
Why are we going in person next month?
I, I would tell you, half of the people on the planet are beating me up because we're not in person and half the people in the planet, you know, are, it, it's both ways. We have all of the, we can socially distance there. Most people want to have in-person meetings. The mayor council have been having in-person meetings for probably six months now. Is that about correct, Dr. Fisher?
That's correct. We've been back for a while.
Still, you can wear a mask if you like.
Okay. So no, so no, um, no attend, no, no board members and nobody from the public will have any remote session, right?
Correct. We will be going all in person, but please, if anyone has any trepidations at all, please let me know and we will do whatever we can to make reasonable accommodations to make certain that you're comfortable in your surroundings, both. You know, if you're not comfortable in the executive session because it's a closer room, we can always have someone downstairs for you and we can, we can certainly make this work is what we can do.
Hey, Ron, can I just add, there's been a few meetings, especially early on in the COVID thing, where we literally took the entire courtroom over and we, we, we kind of put each other in different quadrants of the room. So we all were quite distanced. We weren't all sitting up on the day ass in the beginning, so.
Yeah, the only, the only problem that would be is if we have an application where there's a lot of objectors, then
Of course.
Hmm. You know, or even the neighbors, it, you think about how much space even everyone on this meeting is taking up right now in four or five foot increments, so.
Well, maybe we need to move our meetings to the gym again.
Thanks.
So is this the way in the future where we're going to be in person?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, meeting is adjourned.